Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Summit Common Council Organization meeting on January 3rd. Thank you all for coming out this evening, and we have a lot of planned events for you, so let's get started. I will first start by calling the role of the current council. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
And Ms. McTiernan?
Here.
Thank you. We will now do the pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to call the children of our current and our current council and our council-elect families. If you'd like to come forward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of events is our invocation. We will be having two invocations this evening. The first will be delivered by Rabbi Stuart Dershowan from Temple Sinai here in Summit, and then Shawn Callender, our pastor from United Methodist Church here in Summit as well. Rabbi, if you'll please.
Good evening, Happy New Year, and thank you for this honor. Dear God, the source of all life and all love in this universe, we pray that this reorganization meeting of Summit Common Council be a time of vision, inspiration, and unity. For today is the day of swearing in. Today is the day of accepting moral responsibility. We pray for all who hold positions of leadership in our city's life. We thank you for your willingness to serve and to assume the mantle of leadership. As Moses said to his successor Joshua, so do we say to you, "Chazak v'Amatz," be strong and courageous. Tonight, we ask for your blessing upon retiring council member Mary Ogden, who has served our city with great distinction and selflessness. We ask for your blessing upon council members-elect B. David Naidoo and Gregory S. Vartan III, as well as returning council members Stephen Bowman, Marjorie Fox, Matthew Gould, Beth Little, Mike McTiernan. May your service to our city always be guided by civility, compassion, and the bravery to pursue what is right and what is just for all Summit's citizens. We ask tonight for your blessing upon our mayor Nora Radus. May your service to our city always be endowed with wise judgment, clarity of purpose, the patience, and the strength to lead our city to consensus and unity. Finally, we ask for your blessing upon us all. Help us to appreciate one another, to see the humanity in everyone, no matter their religion, ethnicity, or the color of their skin. Give us the strength to stand up for the beauty of diversity, the power of inclusion, the wonder of mutual respect. Give us the zeal to be advocates for justice, activists for liberty, defenders of human dignity. May our city of Summit always be characterized by its unceasing pursuit of justice and made strong by its vision of equality and human dignity for all. And to this may we all say, amen.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Thank you.
And now we'll call up Pastor Shawn Callender Hogan.
Let us continue in an attitude of prayer. Ever-present God, we give you deep thanks for the blessing of community and the opportunity of service. It is in surrendering ourselves to the common good that we find new levels of joy and satisfaction. And so we ask that you would place your blessing upon this council. May all who participate discern and lean on your presence as they serve our city of Summit, and may they faithfully face the challenges and opportunities of this work with vision and with joy. Enable each to bring the gifts of compassion and enthusiasm, perseverance, and wisdom to their work. Together, may they be good stewards of our resources and loving caregivers of all who call Summit home. We ask this with humility and with hope. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And now I'd like to call upon our Honorable Judge John Callahan, who will be swearing in our two council members-elect. And then we will have council member-elect B. David Naidoo, please come up with your family and your wife Andrea.
Can I go ahead now? Please repeat after me. No, you don't have to put your hand up if you have it on the Bible, which would be wonderful. I, B. David Naidoo, do solemnly swear.
I, B. David Naidoo, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of the office of council member Ward 1.
Of council member, of the office of the council member Ward 1.
Very good. According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Wonderful. Did you want to do another one?
Your certificate, and if you would please take a seat at the dais. Thank you. And now we will call upon council member-elect Greg Vartan from Ward 2. And will Megan Cunningham and his family please come forward and join him.
Please repeat after me. I, Gregory S. Vartan.
I, Gregory S. Vartan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of the office of council member Ward 2.
Of the office of council member Ward 2.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
That was perfect.
Thank you.
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right. My goodness. You're so eager. Do you take this?
I sure do.
Okay.
Now that we have a full council, I'm going to take another roll call. So, Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Ms. McTiernan?
Here.
Mr. Naidoo?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Here.
Thank you. The next order of business we have is to elect our council president. So, the floor is now open to nominations. Do I have any nominations? Councilwoman Fox?
I move that we nominate David Naidoo.
I second.
Any other nominations in order? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council President, congratulations.
Thank you very much. So the next order of business is to elect the president pro temp. Do I have any nominations for the president pro temp? Beth?
Thank you, Council President. I would like to nominate council member Matt Gould for president pro temp.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Repose, abstentions? Great. Okay. Moving on.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Before we get to the mayor's state-of-the-city address, I'd like to just make a comment about the passing of former council president Rich Madden. Rich served for two terms as council president from 2010 to 2015, I mean served for two terms on Common Council from 2010 to 2015, serving as president pro temp from 2010 to 2011, and council president from 2012 to 2013. From what I understand, Rich had numerous accomplishments in his professional life and a very loving family. But from my own experience with him, I found Rich to be a consummate gentleman. And the world is woefully in need of people like him. So with that, I would like us to take a moment of silence in honor of the memory of council president Richard Madden. I'd also like to give thanks to the Summit High School for doing the string quartet being upstairs. I don't know if some of you saw them, but you certainly heard them if you were here at the reception. And so I'm going to go through the names of the students and their orchestra director, and I'm probably going to mess up some of them, so apologies to them for that. But Sophie Lee, Nicole Lee, Sarah Ma, Josie Coats, Daniel Draper, and their orchestra director is Barbara Virchelli. And if you guys give me a moment, also, just like to give some thanks to folks who attended tonight's event. You may have seen before they had to leave for New Providence, State Senator Tom Kane was here, Assemblyman John Bramnick was here. We also have in the audience former mayor Jordan Glad, who's here, council, former council president Henry Ogden, former council president Dave Baumgarts, former clerk David Hughes. And then there's council member-elect from Berkeley Heights Steve Yellen is here, and from the freeholder-elect, sorry, just one second, Kimberly Modell, I'm going to probably pronounce that one wrong too, but Moded for coming in. Thank you all for sharing this meeting with us. We really appreciate you coming in and spending time with us here. And with that, I will turn it over to our great mayor Nora Radus, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. So you're probably saying it's not a good sign that you brought a glass of water. But there are empty seats, so please come forward if you would like to take a seat. This is by design, this is not a quick speech. Good evening, my fellow residents, members of Common Council, and city staff. Welcome to all of our honored guests. I won't go on and name them as council president and I do just did, but I appreciate that you had been here and that those of you who were able to stay, I'm very glad you're here. Tonight, it is my honor to stand before you as your mayor and report that 2018 was a year of accomplishment in Summit. Together, we made a strong city even stronger through the implementation of a number of thoughtful and fiscally responsible civic improvements. And, in case nobody noticed, the Morris Avenue Bridge is open. Members of Common Council and I have worked diligently to move the city forward while keeping an ever-present eye on the city's bottom line. It continues to be my priority and my pride that council and I work closely together, regardless of party affiliation. In Summit, truly, our residents come first. A few changes in the makeup of council. Councilwoman Mary Ogden retired, President Naidoo has been reelected, and newly-elected member Greg Vartan has joined us on the dais. I am confident that in 2019, we will continue to enjoy our Summit tradition of civility, robust debate, and thoughtful outcomes. I cannot mention council without a word about Richard Madden. As was mentioned, he passed away on December 21st. Rich was on council from 2010 to 2015 and served as president. He was a brilliant man and a consummate gentleman who governed with respect. He made it a priority to share his wisdom with me when I was elected mayor, and I was touched and very grateful. Although he struggled with illness in the last few years, he was not a stranger to City Hall and was always available for guidance. We will miss you, Rich, and remain extremely grateful for your dedicated service to our city and our country. Communication continues to be a priority for me. I will continue my weekday and weeknight office hours, meet the mayor events on weekends, and meetings by appointment. I've been able to speak with many residents and business owners over the last three years, and I appreciate you sharing your ideas and concerns. As a city, our strength lies in our ability to define our priorities and work together to make them a reality. To do that, we need to be informed citizens, and we need to be able to share our ideas, thoughts, and skills. So please, if you have not already done so, go to the city website and click on the notifications tab. And this might sound like a little thing, but honestly, this will take you to a page where you can sign up to receive email or text notifications about city services, events, and information on all sorts of municipal activities in town. You'll see a list of categories and just choose what interests you. It really is the best way to know what's going on. Traffic on our website continues to grow. We often exceed 30,000 visits a month. And the city of Summit actively posts on Facebook, Twitter, with two or three posts a day. We've expanded our video capability and our YouTube channel. Please like and follow the city of Summit on social media. And if you have another idea about how to reach you with information, please, we'd like to hear it. Just email pressoffice@cityofsummit.org. As I talk about our continuing dialogue as a community, it is impossible to ignore the ways in which we have been tested over the past six weeks. I know that we can depend upon our beloved Summit to reject the sad, current national trend toward divisiveness and incivility. When bad things happen, Summit comes together. Our vigils and meetings are important responses to troubling times. I am proud of this tradition, and even prouder of the substantive actions we are taking in the programming that we are putting in place, especially in the schools. We can and will ensure that hate speech has no place in our schools or in our public places. One wonderful example of our ability to come together to benefit residents across demographics of age and income is our community center. The new building is nearly finished, and we anticipate a soft opening in the first quarter of this year. As you may recall, when the $6.5 million project was approved, council challenged the community to raise $1.2 million in private funds. I am very proud of the residents and corporate sponsors that stepped up to the challenge and raised $1.5 million. I've toured the site, and the new space is really going to be terrific, especially the senior lounge and the full-sized gym. Programming that residents have desired for years will now be possible as a result of our larger and more flexible space. I would also like to highlight the way various community organizations came together during the renovations to help the Department of Community Programs continue its wonderful programming, including Pilgrim Baptist Church, St. John's Lutheran Church, and the Junior Fort Nightly Club. I also want to thank the neighbors of the community center. We all know how invasive construction can be, and I am very grateful for your patience and understanding. Our downtown is flourishing. I am happy that there is ample good news to share on that front. Our retail vacancy rate is an outstanding 1.3%. Let me repeat that, 1.3%. And some of the larger spaces have been signed by tenants who are currently undertaking renovations. Several new businesses have opened reflecting our modern economy with a mix of experiential and traditional retail. The space that used to house Rosalita Mexican Restaurant has been taken over by the owners of Summit House, and that was able to expand its liquor license into the new space and will create a new take on Tex-Mex. The space formerly occupied by Bombay Bistro will be a noodle restaurant, ramen, and the space vacated by the Summit Food Market will be divided between the Bull and Bear Microbrewery and the Lash Lounge. The former newspaper store in the corner of Beechwood Road and Springfield Avenue will be occupied by The Shade Store. And in addition, the ground floor of 47 Maple Street will house Special Properties, a subsidiary of Christie's. We're pleased that loosening up some of our downtown ordinances has allowed for additional flexibility to best use our available space. While we still have some vacant spaces, property owners and Nancy Adams, the executive director of Summit Downtown, are actively recruiting tenants. Downtown Summit is increasingly known as a place to shop and share a meal. We appreciate the strength of the pedestrian traffic that has helped support this important community asset, particularly when some of our neighboring towns with similar demographics labored under a 15% vacancy rate as recently as a year ago. One priority in making our city as business-friendly as possible was improving our construction permitting process. The construction office continues to be one of the busiest offices in City Hall. In 2018, nearly 2,300 construction permits were issued, representing $120 million of value. The code office made over 9,500 inspections in 2018. The online building and construction permit portal, entitled SDI/SDL, was launched on January 2nd of last year, and over 100 public users have utilized it. This innovation allows residents to track the progress of a permit application, research property information, and obtain Open Public Records Act data, resulting in fewer trips or calls to City Hall. This practical and cost-effective service is a direct response to those in the community who asked for a better way to do business with the city. This system is a first step, and we are committed to increasing the number of users in 2019 and to making the permitting process nearly seamless going forward. In a related area, one of the most important things the city does is to maintain and improve our infrastructure, crucial to resident safety and public health. While these projects are not generally very exciting, residents are always happy when their streets are repaved or otherwise improved. In 2018, we completed road improvements on nine roads, micropaved 51,000 square yards of roadways, improved the alleyway between Springfield and DeForest avenues, and added a sidewalk on Maple Street by the K Lot. The larger projects were done by outside contractors, but the Division of Public Works completed several other paving projects, saving our taxpayers over $103,000. Additionally, we executed several drainage and sewer projects. Most of us only notice roadwork, but with miles of sanitary and storm sewers and thousands of sanitary and storm structures, a significant portion of city infrastructure is underground. Lastly, the Department of Community Service also focused on several pedestrian safety projects, such as traffic calming, striping and bumpouts, including a flashing beacon at Morris Avenue and Aubrey Street, annual curb and ADA ramp improvements, and the intersection realignment at Plymouth Road and Silver Lake Drive. As I said, these projects are not exciting, but good stewardship of our physical surroundings is a hallmark of what makes Summit such a well-run and desirable place to live. Our stewardship of our roads and sewers is very important to our safety, but of course, our safety mainstay here in Summit is our wonderful responsive police force. Our police are truly proactive and thoughtful about our well-being, and one example of that was the 2017 recommendation to re-establish a traffic unit. This unit has been operational for a year and a half. Priorities include educating citizens as to the rules of the road, analyzing traffic patterns, and concluding traffic studies. But a main function is to enforce moving violations when necessary. In 2018, over 1,000 summonses were given to motorists for not following the rules of the road, and in particular, for speeding and distracted driving. Unfortunately, many of those summonses have been issued to Summit residents. We must all be more careful, as well as be role models, as we navigate our Summit roadways. One important priority is to improve conditions that we know to be dangerous. This year, we installed four-way stops at the intersections of Wittridge and Essex Roads, and Wittridge Road and Hobart Avenue, as well as Oakland Place and Elm Street. While drivers needed some time to adjust to the new stop signs, I have heard many people praise them. In addition, the Public Safety Committee authorized the installation of speed humps at locations on Woodland Avenue and Ashland Road. Speeding on these roads has been a common occurrence, and police department education and enforcement had not changed motorists' behavior. We are doing follow-up studies to determine the effectiveness of the humps, but preliminary data suggests speed humps are indeed having a positive impact, and many neighbors appreciate the traffic calming effect. Every member of council and I received complaints about speeding in town, some perceived and some a reality. And we are determined to take whatever steps necessary to address and decrease speeding issues that occur in our city. While the Police and Cities Engineering Department can eradicate, can educate, enforce, and redesign roadways and intersections for safer travel for pedestrians and motorists alike, it is incumbent upon each one of us to travel with deliberation and focus, whether by car, on a bike, or on foot. Lastly, unfortunately, we did have 15 car thefts in 2018. In all but one instance, the cars were unlocked and the keys or fobs were left in the cars. In the case in which the fob was not in the car, the car was unlocked and the motor was running. In all seriousness, 12 of the vehicles have been recovered. Now, this behavior truly is making neighborhoods less safe because the would-be thieves know they can sometimes access vehicles quite easily in our town. I implore every vehicle owner to lock your cars and keep the keys inside your house. Taxes are never a popular topic, but nonetheless, crucial to our city's fiscal health and to our quality of life here in Summit. While it is important to maintain and improve our city infrastructure, we are always mindful of the demands on our taxpayers. As you know, we had a 0% municipal tax increase in 2018, and I am committed to working with council and city staff to develop a stable budget this year. We face many pressures on our budget, not the least of which is increasing demands for capital projects. All of us want the city to be in the best possible repair, but prioritization and vision are essential. are essential. Council has been diligent in cutting costs where possible, such as the merged court system last year. It provides about $100,000 annual savings, and I am pleased to say that our residents do not feel significant inconvenience. In order to make our tax dollars go as far as possible, I continue to stay in close contact with our Union County Freeholders to ensure that they understand our needs and provide all the assistance they can. Under the leadership of Chairman Sergio Granados, the Freeholders delivered a budget that was under the 2% cap for the first time in many years. We received several grants from Union County for road improvements and for a bocce court for the seniors at the community center. We also received $400,000 from the New Jersey Department of Transportation to implement pedestrian safety measures at the train station. Maintaining an informed dialogue with the Freeholders is critical to our cooperative relationship. The Freeholders held one of its October meetings here in Summit to make it easier for our residents to come to the meeting and speak out, and I was happy to see that some of our residents did come and did speak out. I appreciate this acknowledgement that our concerns matter to our county officials. We are very fortunate to live in a city that offers first-class services and amenities which we both enjoy and have come to expect. Increasing our asset base is an important factor if we want to hold the line on taxes. Last year, I reported that we had negotiated a tax reduction with Celgene and that we needed to look at other ways to increase our tax base. We have a strong residential ratable base that has shown positive incremental growth in recent years. In 2018, we experienced an increase in construction value of $22 million, or approximately 22%. But frankly, that's not enough to maintain level taxes and still deliver the services we have all come to expect from our city. Increased commercial ratables are a crucial component in a healthy city budget. Thus, we are proceeding with thoughtful redevelopment in the Broad Street West corridor. One of the clearest mandates from the master plan reexamination process in 2016 was a need for a balanced redevelopment. The national housing market now places a premium on the ability to live within walking distance of a vibrant town center with proximity to shops, restaurants, places of work, and mass transit. Summit is uniquely positioned to take advantage of this trend, where a transit hub 20 miles from New York City with a thriving downtown and an excellent school system. The obvious opportunity for redevelopment is Broad Street West, an area of town that has been called out for thoughtful redevelopment and change for the past 20 or 30 years. This past year, the 10-acre parcel between Broad Street, Morris Avenue, and Maple Street was officially declared by council as an area in need of redevelopment. This designation allows the city to offer tax incentives to redevelopers, and it also allows the city to maintain control over the type and quantity of redevelopment. As I noted last year, this designation is one of non-condemnation, meaning that any of the private property owners in the area in need of redevelopment can participate in the redevelopment or choose not to. The city does not have the desire or the statutory authority to force any of these owners to participate. Throughout 2018, we held several meetings for members of the public to elicit input regarding redevelopment. We also met with all the private property owners and stakeholders in the area, including representatives of the library and the YMCA. Moving forward, there will be ongoing opportunities for residents to share ideas and concerns. To be sure, there will be some degree of disruption in town as we get into the actual construction phase of the project. But in order to be good stewards for the future, we need to have the courage to make some hard decisions. I continue to think back on the vision of our city fathers, who in the midst of the Great Depression committed precious city funds to the sinking of the railroad tracks downtown. Our city would never be the thriving community hub it is today if we had train tracks running through the middle of town. This is our opportunity to do our part to provide value not just for our current residents, but for their children and grandchildren. To begin the process, council hired a redevelopment attorney, who along with our planning firm Topology, prepared a request for qualifications for redevelopers. We received a remarkable 12 responses. We asked the developers to then provide us with broad concept plans regarding what could be built on available parcels. Members of common council, city staff, our attorney, our planner, and I met with the eight developers who submitted concepts with varying degrees of detail. This process has gone very well so far and is a testament to our efforts to be available and accessible, both to the community at large and to the interested parties. This responsibly proactive approach should ensure that our outcome is to the benefit of the entire community. The next step will occur in the first half of 2019, when the Planning Board and Common Council approve a specific redevelopment plan. After that, council must designate a conditional redeveloper or redevelopers with whom we will negotiate a redevelopment agreement, laying out in detail the redevelopment plans, costs, rights, and obligations of the parties. This process is critical to the ultimate success of the project and could, or should, we hope, be accomplished by the end of 2019. One important synergy of the Broad Street redevelopment project is that it will help us to address the significant need for a new city firehouse. One of the most important responsibilities that I feel as mayor is to keep our citizens safe, and the dangerous fast-moving fire that we experienced on New Year's Eve morning last year at 125 Summit Avenue was a serious reminder of the debt we owe to our brave firefighters. It is a testament to their planning and training, with a specific approach to potential fires at each apartment and commercial building in town, that nobody was seriously hurt. Currently, we have a firehouse that is 100 years old. It was built for a generation of equipment that cannot meet today's needs. It is not even large enough to accommodate the size of modern fire engines. In addition, it is in serious need of upgrades and repairs. This is a responsibility that we cannot shirk. Fortunately, the current building could be sold as part of the Broad Street redevelopment process, allowing additional flexibility in negotiations with developers and potentially significantly defraying the necessary cost of the new firehouse. Thorough research has determined that the best location for a new firehouse is on a portion of the non-resident parking lot on Broad Street next to the Salerno-Dwayne office. The design phase will take much of 2019, and we hope to request bids at the end of 2019. This is indeed a very large capital project. The anticipated cost is approximately $11.5 million. I realize that this is a significant decision and may seem like a substantial risk, but it was not made lightly. Unfortunately, a new building is an absolute necessity, and this is one of those tough decisions that council and I are elected to shepherd our community through. I am confident that we will find the most cost-effective way possible to make this investment in our public safety. Finally, the ever-popular topic of parking. Council and I, working with the Parking Services Agency, have continued to embrace innovation to address our downtown parking shortage and improve the parking experience for residents and visitors. In 2016, we pioneered the promotion of ride-sharing as a way to ease parking congestion in the downtown. Last year, after surveying users, we expanded and enhanced the program. We changed vendors from Uber to Lyft in order to offer scheduled pickups and created a pickup location in front of the train station. This year, we expanded the program to include up to 100 resident employees. We installed pay stations and removed parking meters in half of the downtown, mostly along Springfield Avenue, and we replaced the downtown parking meters with parking kiosks for on-street parking in the downtown area. The parking kiosks have greatly improved turnover in the premium parking spaces on the street. The kiosks work especially well with the Park Mobile app that the city adopted a few years ago. If you've not tried the app yet, I highly encourage you to do so. We recognize that there was a bit of a rocky rollout to our license plate recognition program, but it has been very successful in preventing meter feeding and improving turnover at spots in the downtown, ensuring that the 90-minute spaces are available for the benefit of shoppers and diners that they are meant for. This not only helps our merchants, it helps all of us find a space when we need one in town. Many of you have heard me say many times that Summit's best asset is its people, and that continues to be true. Tonight, we recognize the many men and women who have volunteered on various boards and committees. They are all committed to making Summit the best that it can be, and their hours of service are invaluable. We are committed to engaging even more citizen volunteers to help create a plan for the future of our city. We are fortunate to have community members who have tremendous talent and are willing to share their expertise. Having been your mayor for three years, I am here to tell you that in addition to the strength of our volunteers, our paid professionals, the men and women who work for the city, are top-notch. They are focused on their jobs, they want to do their jobs well, and they care deeply when things go awry. Over and over again, when residents come to us with suggestions and complaints allowing us to see areas that can be improved, our staff responds. Much of the innovation I have discussed tonight is the result of the hard work and creativity of these individuals, and I want to thank all of them. I want to finish by extending my sincere thanks to Mary Ogden, who is stepping down after three years on common council. Mary has given countless hours to the city at council and committee meetings and engaging residents all around town. Mary, you have made strong contributions to our city, fought for the needs of the less fortunate among us, and graciously supported our city staff. I am grateful for your hard work and your dedication. I've enjoyed working with you, and I'll certainly miss you. I want to welcome Greg Vartan, representing Ward 2. You worked hard in the recent election, Greg, and I look forward to serving Summit with you. And of course, I am very happy to welcome David Naidoo back to the dais and look forward to another year of his strong leadership on council. I honestly do not think anyone in this city should underestimate the uniquely cooperative relationship council members and I have with one another and with city staff. I am very proud that our goal, our collective goal, is to work together, leading Summit to become an even greater city than it already is. Again, it has been a pleasure working with the 2018 council to accomplish what we did. It's been my honor and privilege. Thank you, and Happy New Year.
On behalf of the mayor and the common council, it is my honor and privilege to present this chair here to Mary Ogden. Mary and I began our council service together three years ago. I knew immediately that I would get along well with Mary, because when we were here for our swearing-in, she completely ignored me and talked to my sons instead. Mary served for two of her three years as the chair of the Safety Committee, where I cannot imagine a stronger advocate for the police and fire departments. Mary fully had the backs of these men and women who serve our community so ably. She fought for increased number of firefighters, for a new fire station, and improved equipment for these departments. Mary did double duty in her first year by also being chair of the Law Committee. It is there where I first interacted with her. She confronted a backlog of issues that needed to be resolved, and she set about the task, conscientiously working through those issues and reaching for common sense solutions. This past year, Mary tag teamed with Beth Little on two committees, serving as the chair of the General Services Committee as well as on the Finance Committee. Not only did Mary work on budgetary issues that, as the mayor said, led to a 0% increase in our tax rate and a decrease in capital expenditures, but she was also involved in continuing to improve our parking infrastructure. Again, I witnessed firsthand how Mary operated. She asked questions, focused on what is doable, came at issues with one aim in mind: what is in the best interest of our community? Let me close by saying that public service is a concept that is embodied in the Ogden household, with Mary and Henry having served, to the best of my knowledge, as the only husband and wife on council. And Mary's service does not come to an end now. She will continue to serve as the mayor's representative on the Planning Board, and this is particularly important, as the mayor just said, because the Planning Board will be involved in the Broad Street redevelopment project this year. Nonetheless, I speak for all of us when I say that we will miss you, Mary. But instead of saying goodbye, we say au revoir. Best wishes to our dear friend, Mary Ogden. The next order of business, and we'll just do it from here if the mayor will join me, and we are going to now give out the presentation for recognizing those who are retiring from different boards and committees of the city.
So we're going to be on the list, I'm not sure everyone's here, but first, for service on the Mayor's Partnership for Public Art, Diane Gallo. I think Diane and her husband Vito have moved out of town, I believe, to Bayonne, so God bless them. Next is the Community Programs Advisory Board, Laura Rourke. And then, Shailene Way from the Community Programs Advisory Board. And then, two members of the Board of Education who finished out their terms in May. I don't see either, David Dietz and Rick Hanley. They're not here, but we want to thank all of these members, because they served well and they did a good job, and we are very grateful for their service.
The next person is retiring from the Lackawanna Coalition, Chetan Jav.
Next, then I see John Keizers here, who served as my representative on the Planning Board. Thank you, John, for your service. And also, retiring from the Planning Board because it would be a conflict, is Greg Martin. Are the members of the Police Athletic Advisory Board here? That will be Tom Coniff, Matt Demm, Justin Drysdale, Alex Gianni, and Michael Girard.
Justin is here.
Justin. The PAL is a great organization, and these guys run events almost once a month throughout the year. All right, and so you put a lot of time, you all work during the day and weekends, and once a month, your Saturdays or Sundays are taken up, so thank you very much. Please send our thanks, everyone.
The next person that's retiring is Rich Fiori from the Recycling Advisory Committee, although not retiring from helping out in the city and now going onto the Planning
And last, but certainly not least, Megan Cunningham, who is retiring from the Rent Commission, because Megan and Mr. Vartan are engaged, and that would be a compliment. So, we have someone, I missed someone, and I apologize. Recycling Advisory Committee, Chris Leejoy.
So, the next is the announcement of appointments for 2019 by council, and just so folks know, there'll be a resolution with regard to who was named that will be posted on the city's website tomorrow, so please look on the website and you'll find appointments. Want to say anything for the mayor or the appointments?
I just, I think everyone, you know, it's remarkable, people put in their volunteer applications to volunteer for various boards and committees in town, and most of the time when you come, say to someone, "Can you serve?"
in town, and most of the time, when you come say to someone, "Can you serve?" and explain how much really is involved, people say yes. It's truly remarkable, and it's a great experience. You learn about the city, you learn about your fellow residents, and most everyone who serves really enjoys it. So I can't thank people enough, truly. This city would not run the way it does without its volunteers. So, thank you.
Yes, indeed. Thank you. The next is the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Great. Next, motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.